Okay, good evening and welcome to the Foxborough Zoning Board of Appeals October 20, 2022 meeting. First item of business are the minutes from our September 22 meeting. Any questions, anybody? So I'm gonna have to do this by roll call. Dave, are you still there? Maybe we're missing him now. Anyhow, let me start here then. Kurt?
Can you hear me?
Oh, there he is.
Okay. Roll call on the minutes from September 22. Do you have any questions first? I guess not. Let me have a motion, a motion to approve the minutes.
I move we approve the minutes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Okay, and Barney, yes. Couple of other items, I think I sent to everybody this week, the listing of the Citizen Partner Training Collaborative Program, Programs, the webinars that they're offering this fall. There are two or three that I think are probably worth taking. Diana, how do you want to handle it if anybody wants to take something?
What did you do?
I think I registered, then said-
You registered, but say you're gonna mail in a check and then you send me the copy of the registration and then I do the thing to get finance to pay for it. I think that's how we did it.
Okay.
So you guys register yourselves. And then just went where it says pay by credit card or send in a check, just send in a check and then forward me whatever email you get and then I can send it down to finance and get it paid that way.
Okay. And again, as I mentioned to Lorraine and Kurt, there are a couple of real good ones that, you know, you may want to take if the timing is convenient. The one on special permits and variances is pretty basic, but it's a good summary of what we have to know. And the one on non-conforming uses gets a little bit complicated and complex, but it's also worth taking. I'm probably gonna take that one again. Paige informed me the other day that the Fall Town Meeting, which was supposed to have been in December, has been moved to January. As far as I know, there are no zoning items that will be on the warrant.
The only thing they're doing is changing the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board.
Okay.
So we're having a hearing for that next Thursday.
That would obviously necessitate some minor changes in zoning by law.
Yeah, we're just doing a blanket instead of like trying to find every single one and list it, we're just gonna say any mention of Board of Selectmen being changed to Select Board.
And next week, I have a meeting with Paige and Gabby and Scott to discuss zoning bylaw revisions that would be on the warrant for the annual town meeting. There are several that Paige, Gabby, and Scott have identified, I think mostly in the way of clarifications. One proposal though will deal with a limited site plan review. That was an outgrowth of our decision on the childcare center last month, a couple of months ago.
I'll join you while I'm here.
Anything else, anybody else has? Paige, is there anything you'd like to add?
She was there, I saw her.
She was there.
No, I don't, I think you covered it all. Solar is another major thing we're taking a look at, because we've learned that, you know, our solar bylaws rather skim on details. It doesn't really address canopies, it doesn't address that sort of thing. So we've had some inquiries and we're taking a look at solar.
Okay, thank you. So give us about another minute and we'll go into the public hearing. We have the continued public hearing. 119 Moore Street Realty Trust requests a comprehensive permit under the local initiative program pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, to construct 52 condominium residential units, 25% of which will be affordable to households earning not more than 80% of the area median income. The property is situated at 119 Moore Street in the general industrial district and is in a future aquifer area overlay district. In Town Hall tonight are Lorraine Brew, Kim Mellon, Kurt Yegian, and myself, Barnard Overett. Dave Brown is attending and participating by Zoom. Paige Duncan is on Zoom. Dylan and Molly from Environmental Partners are on Zoom. I don't know, Scott, are you there? Scott Shippey is not there, at least as of yet.
I am here.
Oh, there he is. Scott Shippey is there. And Judy Barrett, are you there? At least not yet. Your full team is here, except for Jeremy on Zoom.
And Stephanie.
And Stephanie on Zoom, okay. So let me just update since the September 29 hearing session as far as the materials that we've received, all of which are on the town website. We have a September 30, 2022 email from Carl Vandenboom forwarding photographs of the 119 and 131 Moore Street sites. October 3, 22 emails from Christine Isom and from Kathy and David Young. October 6, 2022 email from Lisa Pereira concerning and forwarding information with respect to pending legislation that proposes an amendment to the Chapter 40B, Section 23. And October 17, 2022, letter from James Parker of Nangle Consulting Associates, Inc., together with Enclosures. And October 18, 2022, email from William Buckley of Bay Colony, Inc., Bay Colony Group, Inc., providing a revised site plan for the 119 Moore Street premises. And October 19, 2022, letter from Attorney Stephanie Kiefer with an enclosed letter dated October 7, 2022, from James Parker of Nangle Consulting Associates. We have an October 19, 2022 email, and the same email sent again in October 20, 2022, from Kathy and Carl Vandenboom with various links to and copies of materials concerning flooding, wastewater, and other issues. What I'd like to have is a motion to enter these into the record and to waive the reading.
I move that we enter these into the public record and waive the public reading.
Dave, second it?
Second.
Again, I have to do this by roll call. Kim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. I'm gonna turn it off to you. What I want to do first is a discussion review of the revised site plan.
We'll turn that over to Bill and Jeremy. They can give you a brief overview of the revision and then open it to the board with any questions that you might have.
You gonna take that, Jeremy?
Sure. Let me go ahead and share my screen as well.
Bill, can you get it on the screen or?
Let me know if you guys, when you guys-
Try it before it works.
So this is the aerial image that you should be seeing at the moment. Things changed there. So as we alluded to at the last time we met with you guys, the big change is the designation of the riverfront setback area. On this plan, it's this dark blue line that sort of bifurcates the site here, kind of through the middle. That's off of the left bank. Off of the right bank, you can actually see it kind of sneaking in the corner of the site over on the far right-hand side of the page as well. Again, in our previous schemes, we were operating under the assumption that the riverfront area didn't begin really till the other side of the bridge, when the river really pinched down. But this is the designation that's come through more recently. And as we shared last time, the impact of that, it would suggest that the pair of duplexes here in the lower corner are in that riverfront area, as is a portion of the first fourplex building there in the lower right-hand corner. And last time, we mentioned our potential, you know, intention of removing the four duplexes, or the four duplex units, I'm sorry. But seeing if we could retain the four units in that fourplexes, there are allowances for some amount of footprint within the riverfront setback area. And looking at it a little bit more closely, we've determined that the safer bet would be to go ahead and remove two of those units as well. So we'll go ahead and tab forward to the revised plan as we're proposing it. So this would be a total of 46 units. I'll give it a second to catch up here. There it is. So again, effectively, what we've done is taken half of a fourplex. So it's a duplex, but a stacked duplex, rather than a side-by-side duplex in that same location. Rather than sort of leave it in its same orientation, I'm actually suggesting we rotate it so that it still sort of holds that corner the way we had originally intended with the previous structure. So a very small portion of that structure would still be within the riverfront area, but again, well within, we think the allowances that the Concom would review and confirm. So again, as a result, we would have 46 total units down from the 52. We would have 12 affordable units instead of the 13 affordable units previously proposed. Otherwise, the rest of the plan remains effectively as it was before.
Anybody have any questions?
I just wanted to check, I'm sorry, your voice is a little, it was a little bit difficult to hear. So if I'm hearing you correctly, your idea was that I would become a stacked duplex and you would rotate it, but a part of it would still remain within the riverfront area? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Not right now, nobody.
Dave, any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay. Paige, or Dylan, or Molly?
Nothing, no.
Any questions from the public? Yes.
I have to come here just really quick. Is it fair to say then that that is the density they're willing to-
Actually, you better go up to the microphone, because otherwise I won't be able to hear you on the Zoom.
Where they've chosen to put this building in the riverfront, is it fair to say that this is the density at which they are willing to move to?
Did Jeremy answer that, or?
Yes.
My boss will answer.
Yes.
The answer's yes?
The answer's yes.
Okay.
That is the minimum density at which they're willing to move to?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, Drew Hoyt, and I'm Wayne Metland. Just a really minor comment, I think, which is that in these sort of color visuals, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think there's been some additional parking that's been added in place of what's still being shown as like trees, like at the apex of the triangle, is that right? Where you added some parking to address recent comments? I just don't know if those changes have been reflected on this color visual in future, I guess, as you continue to present this graphic, if I'm correct.
Yeah, this is just-
Just updated to show the parking and whatever trees may be lost as a result.
I think Jeremy was starting to answer.
Yeah, sorry, I was just suggesting, this is just an illustrative version of the plan. Bill's, or engineered plans are the ones that show like the additional parking. Those are more accurate. This was just a way for us to kind of quickly show how it is we're adjusting to the 46 units to address the riverfront area. But isn't necessarily the most complete plan. Bill will ultimately generate that.
Okay.
One parking question. It's hard to see on here, but I just had a question, and when you look on the-
Okay, go to the microphone again, so.
Yep, sorry. I also want to kind of point though first. When you look at them on the plan, is that a garage or is it like a carport? Because it doesn't look, you can fit a car and a car in the garage.
That is a two-car garage, Mr. Chairman.
But if you look at the, I know, can you put the regular plans up or no?
Do you want me to put the regular plans up? Jeremy Gumrind, thank you.
Yep.
So these have not been revised to reflect Jeremy's, these changes, but I can, we can talk to parking from them because that hasn't changed.
Yeah, the last time, we had trouble seeing the parking, if you recall, so we never actually saw it.
So I think we're talking about this garage right here. This is a two-car garage?
Yes, if you look at, it doesn't appear that there's enough room to park a car and then park a car within the garage.
Park a car and then park a car in the garage.
Because it's supposed to be two parking spots, right? They're supposed to get a garage spot and a regular spot. So it looks like from the garage to the road is not quite a car length.
Yeah, I don't think we, that was intended. I think the additional parking for this, because this is the duplex, would be in the garage and then would be in here on this circular driveway.
Oh, you're gonna have them parking on the circular driveway as the other parking? So the garage isn't having parking in front of it?
That's what we're showing right now. I mean, once we get into more detail, then we might push that back a little closer and maybe get two more parking spaces in front there, but right now, that's the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I had mentioned to Bill earlier, I just wanted to go through, from a perspective of conservation, what is a conservation issue that we need to deal with versus issues that the Conservation Commission would need to deal with? So Bill, can you address that for us?
I can, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna put this back up. So one of the issues that's going on here, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit too, to get a better view. And I'm gonna focus on this area. So we have to deal with the Conservation Commission. Excuse me. There's basically several different areas. The first is, is the riverfront area we've been talking about. So this is the riverfront area now. It's been expanded and you can see how it goes all the way to the edge of the lake and then over here, it almost completely encompasses this portion of the site. Only that portion of it falls outside of the riverfront. So what that means is, and we've talked, I'm not gonna go back over unless somebody has a question on it, is we've talked about the fact that this is what's called a limited project, which means that there's no other way to access the site. And we've talked about the fact that the board has the authority under the Wetlands Protection Act to decide what is adequate access. And up to now, our discussion has been that it will be a 20-foot wide private road driveway with a four-foot sidewalk throughout the site all the way out to Moore Street. So that would be what we'd be presenting to the Conservation Commission and as well as the reconstruction of that bridge. So the commission would review that and decide whether or not that it is indeed a limited project under the regulations, and there's several different criteria that has to be met. In my opinion, it certainly is, and as I, and we know before, as this project has been permitted as a commercial site and at that time, the commission accepted it was a, you know, a limited project. So we have to deal with the riverfront. We're also working in the riverfront by expanding the driveway and we have a portion of the building I in it. So the way that works is, under the Wetlands Protection Act, you can alter up to 10% of the area within the riverfront. Now, when you say alter, that means like alter. But because this site has already been previously developed, so it's, this is where it gets, in my mind anyways, and I do this for a living, it becomes a little unclear because of the way the regs are written. So you're doing a redevelopment in a previously altered area. So because of that, I went, because it's unclear to me, I just did one very similar to this in an industrial zone in Attleboro, and we, me and the conservation agent spent a lot of time going through it. So we, I went and talked to Ms. Pierce about this to make sure that I understood it the way she understood it. And so the bottom line is this, is if you alter more than 10% in a riverfront area, then what you can do is you do what's called a mitigation at a two-to-one ratio. So for example, if you have 11,000 square, let's, for example, so there's about 70,000 square feet of this lot lies within the riverfront. So you can alter 7,000 square feet of it. These are all round numbers, by the way. And then, so what you can do is, but if you're already at that number or due to your expansion of the roadway driveway building, you go over that 7,000 as an example. Say you go to 8,000. You would have to mitigate that at a two-to-one ratio somewhere within the riverfront. And the mitigation could involve something along the lines of removing invasive species, planting native plants, trees, bushes, grasses, or cleaning up areas that needed to be cleaned up within the riverfront area. So for example, you know, in the back of the property where we walked, I don't know if you remember, but as we went around the back, if we went further back on the conservation land, there's junk back there. It's been, I don't know, put it there how long, it's been there, whatever. So if the commission said, oh, we want you to clean up that junk, yeah, we'd do it, but we couldn't count it as mitigation. It has to be within the riverfront area. So that would be part of the discussion we would have with the commission, and they get to decide, you know, what is appropriate riverfront. The other things, the other issues that we'd be dealing with is, again, we've talked about floodplain. So some of the work we're doing, and you can see the light blue line here, let me go to the, actually, the next drawing. So you can see this light blue line, and by taking that, making that building smaller, we took some of it out, some of the activity out of it, but you can still see down here, we would, this, we had a duplex, so that took it out. But down over here, over on the left, on the far left, as you're looking at this drawing, we never got to see it because it was so heavy. But up in this area here, it's a low spot, if you look at the topography, and the river, and the floodplain goes up into that. We will be altering floodplain in that area. So what we have to do in there is to do a minimum of a, it's called compensatory storage. So if we're filling 1,000 cubic feet of floodplain, again, I'm just throwing numbers out, we have to scoop out 1,000 cubic feet of dirt and replace that flood storage. So that would, that would, within the river, within the floodplain, we're filling 1,000 square feet, so we create another 1,000 square feet of flood storage. And that's what we're looking at in that area there. And then there's the other, any work within 100 feet of a wetland, which a large portion of this site is, we would have to file with the commission and show that the activity does not alter the bordering vegetated wetland or the bank in the case of the river, and there are performance criteria for that as well. So those are the things that we'd be doing. As far as the commission, as far as this ZBA would be, changes to the local regulations, the only change that I see would be the fact that there will be some activity being done in the 25-foot no disturb, but not a lot, mostly along this area in the top, I just messed that up, in this corner right here, where the wetlands are pretty close, and then a little bit in this area here. For the rest of the site, we would be outside the 25-foot local bylaw. That's not a Wetlands Protection Act, that's a local bylaw.
So I'm sorry, so you said Building J falls into that and which other building?
That's it.
Well, just Building J falls into the-
Just Building J.
-25-foot no disturb zone. Okay.
Let me just confirm.
So I have, unless you have something else you wanted to say at this moment, I had a question for you.
Sure, let me just-
But I don't interrupt you. Okay, so if we are interested in the adequacy of the height of the fill, let's say, because you're talking about right now, Unit 1, is that correct? That is within floodzone AE, Unit 1, which is the leftmost duplex?
Yep.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, then that is not, is that up to Concom to decide whether that's being done correctly or that's up to us?
Conservation.
So conservation-
That is a Wetlands Protection Act issue.
Okay.
So it's not a local bylaw.
Okay.
The only local bylaw that I see as an issue is, that falls under the purview that we would ask you to waive in this case, is the 25-foot no disturb. So really, Foxborough's wetlands bylaws, I can classify them, they're very straightforward. So they have 150-foot setback for septics. It doesn't apply here because we don't have septics. They have a 25-foot no-touch zone around the wetlands, which we're asking you to waive. They have a 100-foot no-touch zone around certified vernal pools, of which there are none on this site. And that's about it. It's, those are the big things. And as I said, the only one that I, that in my opinion, we're dealing with is that 25-foot no-touch at this point.
Okay, and that's just Building J?
At this point, it's Building J.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions anyone has? All right, that answered my question, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
I just wanted to say that, you know, we know that the wetlands is important to this town, it's in the surveys that the planner has sent out, it's in the letters that you have, so we know this is important. And it just bothers me that in every reference between Mr. Overett and Mr. Buckley, you're, the way you've said this is what that we need to deal with, the issues of the wetlands that we need to deal with, the bylaws that we need to deal with. I don't know that the rest of the town, I can't speak for the rest of the town, but would approve of that language in a friendly 40B? This is how we're approaching this, is what it all has to be dealt with.
I've got no further questions on this issue. Do you have any? You do, I know.
Not on this issue, Mr. Chairman, but I think the other situation that we wanted to bring up was that our client has voluntarily agreed to commit to doing testing of the site, and you have some correspondence in front of you, one of which is a cover letter from Attorney Kiefer, along with a scope of work for testing and analysis of the site of subsurface assessment activities that we would, again, perform voluntarily. of the site of subsurface assessment activities that we would, again, perform voluntarily. You have, you have that with you. And if you have any questions regarding that, Jim Parker from Negro Associates is here to discuss that in detail with you. So I know we, we talked about, in the letter, we said we would do that as soon as scheduling permits, but we were notified today that we do have some estimated dates now to provide to you to do that as soon as possible, so we can relay that information to you as, as well. So we'll open the floor to you and-
Why don't I pass it over to Mr. Parker and what you just explained?
Yeah, he can give you the details.
And what you, what you're proposing?
Sure.
Timing, et cetera.
Right, so we're, we're proposing to go out and put a, probably four to six monitoring wells around the property. We're gonna put them along the northern property line and the western property line, probably somewhere in the middle of the site. We're gonna do soil testing, we're gonna install monitoring wells, we're gonna sample those. We're gonna screen in the field for various constituents, and we're gonna submit samples for lab analysis, in part based on what we encounter in the field. But the other concerns about VOCs, we're certainly gonna test for VOCs, we're gonna look for petroleum hydrocarbons and metals, both in soil and groundwater. We've got a rig scheduled for November 18th, I think, Friday, November 18th. Probably have the results back the first week of December from soil and groundwater sampling.
So November 18th is when you would do the boring?
Mm-hmm.
And results early December?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So your company would do the boring, correct?
A subcontract.
A subcontract, and then what, you send it out to, to a lab?
Right, we collect the samples and we send it out to a lab.
So when you say that you would have the results, that, that would be the results from the lab?
Correct.
Which you would then have to do a report for us?
Correct, we would generate a report based on the soil and groundwater data, and I, I expect to have that done the first week of December, barring no issues with drilling or things like that. I mean, drilling, sometimes you run into issues that takes longer, or, but that's based on our current timeframe, so that's what we're looking at.
Okay.
Why do I want you, you know, Mr. Chairman, lots of times the speakers are just like they're talking.
Joan, the, the microphones, the-
And this one says also-
Joan, the, the microphones are, are not for us, they're, they're for the-
You speak up very nicely.
For the audio, well-
Some speakers do, but some of them-
Maybe you should move up a little bit, but-
As much as I can, I'm a soft speaker.
Can you not hear me?
Move that closer to you.
Mr. Chairman, Bonnie, I can't hear, hear her at all.
So let, let me, your, your, your report says six to eight borings, and I think you said four-
I think, I think I said four to se, I might have said-
Six to eight.
Six to eight, six to eight.
So it's six to eight?
Yep.
Great.
And they would be monitoring wells?
It would be, I was figuring probably four to six monitoring wells, maybe that's what I was thinking. They won't all be monitoring wells, but enough to get coverage on the lot, get groundwater flow direction, and get a good read on what's, what's going on in groundwater.
And it should be largely scattered through the, through the premises themselves?
Correct.
Okay, you probably haven't figured out exactly where yet, though.
I have a sense of where I'm going based on the concerns that have been expressed. So again, we're gonna go along the northern property line, the western property line, probably somewhere in the middle of the site. A lot of that, you know, if we run into something, that can change where we go, because we're gonna try to figure out what's going on, but that, that's the plan going out there.
Now, when, when you get the results, do you have any requirement to report that to DEP?
So, yeah, we analyze for certain parameters, the Mass DEP under the Mass Contingency Plan has a list of parameters, and if you exceed those thresholds, your landowner is obligated under certain circumstances to report that during a certain time period. So a situation like this, it's likely if they found something that was above what's called a reportable concentration in soil or groundwater, the owner would have 120 days to notify DEP of this condition, and then they have to assess it and determine whether or not there's any risk, and if there's risk mitigated, if there isn't risk, then they demonstrate that there's no risk. That all becomes a process with Mass DEP.
So when you said they would have to assess, it would be DEP that would assess?
No, 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 the property owner would have to assess it.
Okay.
Essentially, when you find a problem that's reportable under the Mass Contingency Plan, an owner is now obligated to define the nature and extent of that problem, evaluate whether or not there's risk. If there's risk, they have to evaluate what the options are to mitigate that risk, and then implement those if necessary.
Okay. Questions?
Yes, I do have a few questions. So the lab that you'll be sending this to is an independent lab?
Correct, it would be either Alpha Analytical or New England Testing Lab, one of those two.
Okay, and so you've mentioned six to eight test borings, and then four to six monitoring wells, and those are not the same thing, correct?
Well, so we, we advance a test pouring, we look at the soils, we do continuous pouring, we, there'll be driven samples, actually, we look at this, we take a spoon, we, we observe the soils, find out where the groundwater table is, we go into that groundwater table, and then we'll set a well, we'll set enough wells to get a read on the property, but if we have time, we'll put more borings in across the site. We typically get a rig for a day, so we'll try to get as much coverage as we can in a day. So not every boring will be a well, but every well is a boring, I should say. Does that make sense, or is that confusing? It's, you know, a lot of it is based on how quickly we can move. I, I went out and saw all those test pits that were out there, so it's kind of bony stuff out there, but I'm pretty confident, water's pretty shallow, so I'm pretty confident we can, we can get that number of borings and wells in out there.
Okay.
It's pretty accessible.
And so what is the, what is the depth of a well?
So we would go down, we'd find the groundwater table, and then we usually go six to seven feet into the groundwater table. In a situation where we're looking for things that may be migrating via groundwater, sometimes it's a little different, if you've actually got a source of contamination, you would, you would maybe look at that differently, but in this situation, you're trying to get a read on shallow groundwater.
Okay. And then, once we've finished with our questions at some point, I would be curious to hear what Environmental Partners has to say, but I know we're getting there.
Are there any questions?
No, right now, please.
Kurt?
No.
Dave, any questions?
Nope. No.
Paige?
Nope, no questions.
Okay, so let me turn it over to Dylan and Molly. Molly, I hope you had a chance to look at the, the letter from Mr. Parker?
Yeah, I got it yesterday afternoon. I think it's promising that they're proposing to do this, you know, I think we had mentioned it previously, and it's good. I think, you know, we've talked a little bit about, you know, there's details that aren't in the scope that would be helpful to know. They do reference numbers of soil samples for certain parameters, and I guess it would be good to know where those are gonna be collected from. Some of that is, again, you know, it's based on field observations, but hopefully some of the soil samples will be collected from shallow intervals so that we can get an idea of what future people living there might be encountering when they're out in, you know, the open areas. So in general, yes, it's, it's promising that this is gonna occur, and I agree, if they find certain things, they're obligated and required by the Massachusetts regulations to report to Mass DEP and figure out the extent of the issue. So just the, the availability of the data sounds a little quick. Are you gonna do, I guess one question is, are you gonna install temporary wells and install them in, sorry, collect samples at the same time? Because my experience with labs lately has been, you know, if you're doing it the week before Thanksgiving, and you're submitting, so usually soil samples go in first, then groundwater, it seems, I don't, I'm saying this because I don't wanna set expectations for a report or results early December, if that's not actually gonna be possible?
So I can respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
So, we're gonna install two-inch monitoring wells, we'll install, and we'll come back a week, we'll develop them that day, and then we'll come back a week later and sample. We never sample the same day we install well. So we'll be back a week later to sample and survey. And, you know, not just Thanksgiving, but we're having problems with labs everywhere, they're all running, same with drilling, they're all running into these delays. But, but, and that's why I gave you a couple labs, because what we'll do at that point is we'll take a look at who's the fastest. But right now, with one of our labs, we're still getting five-day turnaround time. So if we go in on the 18th, we come back in a week and we sample, so soil data will go back, in on the 18th, we'll come back a week later, I think it's the 25th, and with the groundwater data, we'll go in then, and then we think we can get it five days, I gave myself 10. You, you may be right, we may have delays because of the holidays, but, you know, at this point, looking at the schedule, to me, it's reasonable to look at the first week of December. But, but, but Molly's right, you know, it may be the week after that, but it's not gonna be the end of December for sure.
Because we have a, our regular scheduled meetings December 15th, you think you would be, you're fairly confident?
I would think.
Okay.
I would think so.
Okay. Molly, anything else?
Nope, not at this moment.
So you think, you feel this is a reasonable approach to, to this issue?
I do, I think, again, you know, saw this late yesterday, of course, I would think that more soil samples would be preferable, but I do think it's a good, it's a good effort to start, and, you know, if they're willing to, to run more soil samples, particularly some superficial ones, zero to one foot, I think that would be great. But again, I think the willingness to do this and to evaluate the soil and groundwater is, is certainly helpful.
If I could switch to that, Mr. Chairman. So, so we, we, we list the lab, but we'll, we'll screen in the field, so we'll screen for VOCs. We're obviously looking visually at soil, we're gonna look for things like fill, we're gonna look for indications of petroleum hydrocarbons. But when we sample the soils, we're gonna sample continuously, we're gonna screen samples for VOCs, so we'll be sampling probably, I don't know, 40 samples for VOCs in the field. And then that's what we base our determination and analysis. And then we also, I think in that table, I probably said, you know, if, if there's a need for changing the scope, we, we always put that in there, because if we find something or we see something, we say, okay, well, we need to do more analysis, we're, we're gonna say to our client, well, we found this condition, or we, there's more that we should do to characterize what we found in the field based on what we saw or what we screened with field instrumentation.
Yeah, one other-
I'm sorry, we would be looking at shallow soils, obviously, if you're looking at metal, we're looking at direct contact exposure. I mean, metals, you can't really see in the field unless, you know, you find a positive waste or something. So that, that's sort of hit or miss, and, and we would probably be looking at the shallow soil samples for that, just randomly sending samples. The, the other thing, too, is the reason why we, you're putting groundwater, you could, you know, it's a six-acre site, you could put in 100 borings and maybe not find everything, but that's why you put groundwater wells in, because you're gonna get a better read of the site. If there's anything significant that's impacting groundwater, you may pick it up in a while. You might miss it in a boring, but you may pick it up in a while. So it's sort of, you're looking at it two different ways.
Agreed. One further question, I think, when you say you're screening for VOCs, it said you're gonna be calibrated, your field screening equipment will be calibrated to be read as benzene. If you're looking for total VOCs, would you consider calibrating it to read as isobutylene, which is a different response factor? I know this is getting technical, but I'm not sure if I'll have a different opportunity to ask that question.
Yeah, you know, we cal, we calibrate it with isobutylene, but it's, it's read as a, as a benzene standard. I think we're going back to old DEP regs that require that. It's calibrated to isobutylene.
Just, they only require it when you're looking for, in the VPH, EPAH, so it's specific to petroleum, not total VOCs, so just thought-
Yeah, we're, we're not gonna rely on fill VOCs if there's a petroleum condition, we'd run VPH and EPAH, we'd run lab analysis on that, and that's gonna be evident, I, I think, visually and-
Yeah, I'm more, okay. Yeah, we could even, I could even ask that question of you in a different setting.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
It's not super important, but it does affect the field screening.
Okay. One last go-around, any questions from anybody? Dave?
No.
And?
No, no questions.
Okay, Paige, any questions?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Scott's here now, so Scott, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the public, yes?
Sorry, but- Molly seems very knowledgeable. We've picked a great partnership with Environmental Partners. Could she accompany at the time of the drilling so that we all felt comfortable, if a lot of this is site, you know, you're, you need to decide where you're gonna drill by site, to just make sure that we had somebody from the town accompany the drilling?
I mean, it's private property, so I can't require anybody to go on there.
I didn't say require, I said suggest.
It's up to the applicant.
I think we can make some suggestions, though, in a friendly 40B.
I think it would be appropriate, you know, to indicate, you know, to us where, where the, the borings are going to be, and, and that would be, you know, provided to Molly, and certainly if she has any questions about that, I'm sure she would, you know, pass them on.
Sure.
But as far as accompanying, you know, your subcontractor, I, I can't, I can't require that.
Would you be willing to ask him if he would be okay with it, as opposed to require?
I'll ask. I'll ask.
Thank you.
Sure.
But if, but if you would give us, you know, a sense as to where, where the actual, you know, testing is going to occur, you know, I think that would be helpful for our records as well as any questions that Molly might have.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, you have to come up here?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Just to, just to clarify, I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Parker, but I do believe as a licensed site professional, there's a professional obligation for certain conduct in the field. So I understand the concern of the neighbor, but I also think that they are required to conduct themselves in a certain way, taking out a little bit of the risk where it's not as discretionary. And I, I'm, you know, if Molly or Mr. Parker can clarify that, but I do believe there is probably a pretty strict standard when it comes to the MCP, how they have to operate when conducting these tests.
Okay.
This is all my ability.
Tom Hunt, 206 East Street. My question is, I'm not sure of your name, the gentleman in the picture.
Jim Parker.
Are you working with a developer?
Yes, I'm engaged by the property.
Why are we not bringing in an independent person to do these tests? Seems, it seems to me like that's been the, the process with conservation on a lot of, a lot of projects.
I can't retain somebody, I can't, we can't retain somebody, you know, to do it. That's my understanding of the regulations.
Sure.
The, we can require the applicant to do certain things, and I'll, I'm gonna get to that in a second.
Sure.
And then we can do peer review, but my understanding of the regulations is that we cannot ourselves independently do any testing or retain our own party to do any testing.
Okay. As the young lady suggested, having somebody oversee it, what could that, what harm could that do?
You know, again, we'll get the results. Let me, let me put it this way, I'm an attorney.
Sure.
I have certain legal, ethical responsibilities. Accountants do, doctors do.
Right.
I'm sure licensed site professionals do.
I was in questioning his-
So I'm, I'm sure that-
Just saying that it's, it seems logical to, to hire an outside company.
You know, I'm sure that he will do an appropriate job.
Sure.
And if there are any questions, we'll, we'll address them at that point in time.
Especially with there's so much at risk with all the hazardous wastes that's been dumped there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, opening this cauldron of hazardous waste to the general public for the profit of a few individuals, to me, just doesn't make sense.
Well, you're assuming that there's hazardous waste there. Let's see what the, let's see what the results-
We know Bentley Porter dumped sewage there for-
Well, let's, let's, let's not get ahead of ourselves, let's have the testing done, and I'm sure that Mike has already signed off on it?
Yes.
Okay, let's have the testing done, get the results. Okay, let's have the testing done, get the results, and and we'll, we'll cross whatever bridge we have to cross when it's ready to be crossed.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yep, you got to come up here. I'm going to be on candid camera.
Joan Galavan, Nine Cannon Forge. I didn't really have a question. Um, I just wanted to suggest that as a citizen and homeowner here, I think people, and they have, use their common sense. And we don't have any background scientific knowledge and can't get all this scientific knowledge very easily. But, and I've been here for almost 60 years, and when we came here in that area, Rumford River crosses a street, and it goes all through this forest behind, and it does curve. If you look at the Google Maps, you can actually see the the river in there. So I don't really have any scientific background, I can't present any, and I don't think most townspeople are. So I'm speaking, you know, like some of the residents. And I know that Porters had a license, actually, from a Board of Health to dump, it was called Porter Pits. And they pulled off the road for many, many years. Now, some of us here might be living right in that area where there is some contamination. And then on, that's on one side, and all these pits are back there. I haven't seen them, I don't dare go back, but it was obvious, I, maybe I could look on the Board of Health, and maybe they have some records up there. And everything was put in there back then. Everybody put everything in there, garbage and sewage, you know, it wasn't regulated as much as it is even now. And then we have the town dump behind us. The town dump goes downhill into that same Rumford River, if you look at the Google Maps. So I'm just saying, I've been concerned when I'm hearing what's been going on, and I'm just, I'm not, make me more comfortable with that large development, but I'm just saying, thank you for taking the time to think about this a little bit more, because I think it should be brought to your attention a little bit more. And so it's good that we're doing it. And what was done, we're not going to be able to fix, I know. But here it is, so thank you.
So I'm encouraged and appreciative. I mean, I stand 100% by my remarks from the last meeting, but, you know, this is what we wanted, I think, as a group. Um, so again, I'm encouraged and appreciative, and let's keep our fingers crossed that you'll have results to us in early December, and we'll take things from there. Thank you.
I just have one question. I think this might help, is, could we possibly ask, and I'm probably going to not say your name correctly, but Ms. Cody or Mr. Parker or both of you to explain what is an LSP and what are the responsibilities of an LSP, please?
Sure. Molly, do you want to do it? All right. So so an LSP is a licensed site professional. Back in 1993, Massachusetts had regulations that created this, this person, a licensed site professional, who's licensed to oversee the assessment and cleanup of sites where a release of hazardous materials has occurred in Massachusetts. Prior to that, you would do an investigation, environmental engineers would do an investigation, and they would find a problem, and you would you would report it to DEP, and then DEP would sort of, DEP would approve, you know, you would make recommendations, and then they would approve it, but it was ultimately DEP, DEP who had the final say. So they created this privatized program with licensed hyperprofessionals, in large part because there was a pretty significant backlog of sites that we couldn't solve or resolve because there wasn't enough people to review them at this stage. So a licensed hyperprofessional has sufficient education and training and experience in assessment, remediation, evaluating historic land uses. So when when we do an assessment, we we figure out, we look for sources, we identify ways to determine whether or not those sources have impacted a property. And if they have, we assess that, we delineate its extent, and then we evaluate its risk. Because sometimes you can have a release, but it doesn't necessarily represent any significant risk. We evaluate that risk, we determine whether or not there's what's called significant risk or no significant risk. And if there is significant risk, we design a remediation program to mitigate that risk. We oversee that remediation, and then once it's completed, we render an opinion that it's, the condition's been mitigated, and there's no longer any risk in the property. And that's all overseen by an LSP. Every every phase of the process is overseen by an LSP. I think that's it, unless Molly wants to throw something in. We read a lot. LSPs read a lot.
No, I think, I think that's good. I think, you know, it is a license, and I think every time we do work, um, you know, if we have to sign a form or submit something, we have to certify under, you know, the pains and penalties of perjury on every form, that we have done it in accordance with state laws, regulations, and relevant guidance and policy. And I take my license very seriously, I'm sure Mr. Parker does as well.
Okay.
And one more question. So are there any professional requirements for independence from the person that has hired you or the entity that has hired you?
Requirements for independence?
Yes.
Yes.
Molly's shaking her head.
So-
Yes. Nodding.
So as the owner of the property who has hired you, Mr. Parker, is legally bound to do certain things if certain things are identified. So if any reportable concentrations in soil or groundwater are exceeded, the owner of the property is legally bound to report it to Mass DEP. Typically, they do it through their licensed site professional. So so once these soil and groundwater samples are collected and submitted to the lab, the owner, at that point, doesn't have a choice on reporting to the department if any applicable concentrations are exceeded. I think that's, that's the the owner of the property's responsibility if, if anything is exceeded. Conversely, if none of the samples come back in excess of a reportable concentration, then they don't have any further legal responsibility under the Massachusetts Waste Site Cleanup Program, unless they identify something during the construction, should it, should they get to that point.
I, I think, there's, there's one instance where we are obligated to report, it's a thing called imminent hazard, a certain condition. If there's an imminent threat to human health, we're obligated to notify our client. If they don't notify DEP within 72 hours, we have to make a notification. I think what you're getting at is, what if I'm a bad guy, and I'm, because I'm working for this guy, which is a question someone raised, right? Obviously, I'm working for him, I have a contract with him, you know, so I have an allegiance to him as my client, right? Is that kind of what you're getting at, I think? That's what it sounds like to me.
There's some nodding in the audience, so yeah.
And that's, that's a valid question. And I mean, that's, Molly's right in that, you know, we we have a license, and that's when we get into the MCP process, right? Hopefully, we don't get into that, but you could not be in that MCP process. And are there scrupulous engineers who could do things so that they could not find things? There are, you know, like there are in any profession. I think you have to look at people's reputation and and I worry about stamping all those forms to DEP that say, under the pains and penalties of perjury, but I also have a huge professional liability policy that we have to pay because for people to hire you, they want you to have millions of dollars' worth of liability insurance. And for us to stay, we've been in business for 32 years, and mostly the same clients, but but, you know, if, if, there are, there are people out there who do what what you're talking about. Those people don't last long, they're not in the business very long. It becomes pretty apparent that they're a problem. So I, I mean, it is an ethics thing, we do have professional ethics, we have to abide by in terms of notification and all that. But, you know, I'm sort of a principled guy, and I also worry about my liability. So for me not to do what I'm asked to do, which is to do an evaluation whether or not this site's been impacted now in soil and groundwater, you know, I'm going to do that.
Like you said, you take your license very seriously, that's your liability.
Correct, correct.
You stamp something, you're saying there's perjury, perjury.
Correct.
So there's a, there's a significant risk for you, do something unscrewed, like somebody is suggesting.
And and we spend considerable time looking at how to evaluate things, these things. No two sites are the same everything, it's different, the circumstances are always different. Uh, we spend quite a bit of time looking at history, what makes the most sense. I mean, if, if, if money was an endless resource, we'd put a million borings on, but you can't do that. I mean, anybody could do that, right? Anybody could go out there. So you have to think about where you're going to put it, and it's always about, how do I get the most, the best information I can for the amount of money I have that's reasonable to spend to evaluate this. And so we go through that process all the time, and it's iterative. Even as we're out there in the field, we're making decisions about, okay, you know, this is an issue here, but we still, we can't focus on that, we get to worry about other things, maybe we have to come back. We look at all those things very iteratively. It is a litigious business, and I think that's what keeps people who've been in business for 32 years, that's what keeps them honest and and why people can count on on what they provide.
Thank you for the explanation.
Sure.
Okay, anything else? All right. Um, administratively, yes. Last question.
I just want to say, it makes me uncomfortable that we're questioning his ethics at all, like that was really an uncomfortable conversation. I don't think that that's the intention of any of this, is to question him and his license and his, you know, I'm sure he's, he's fine. But I think sometimes when we rush the developers to the developer's timeline, we sometimes don't do things as thoroughly, like Molly was suggesting, let's make sure this is done thoroughly. And we saw that with the river. We, we rushed the developer's timeline, and the river, in fact, did go further than what was originally thought. We just weren't wanting to investigate that because it would have taken up a lot more time with the peer review. I don't want to see that happen here. Is it possible that you could ask the applicant to make an extension until February, just so that we're not under such, either, either or, either have environmental partners be invited or make sure that we're getting the true testing?
Have you hacked into my computer? Because those are the issues we're going to discuss next.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So as the Rolling Stones and Irma Thomas once said, sang, you know, "Time is on my side," what I want to talk about is, is timing. Actually, first bill, as you may remember, at the last meeting, we had talked about a workshop or a working session to deal with with waivers. We decided to to hold off on that pending the revised plan, but why don't we try to reschedule bill at some point in time? Bear in mind, Paige is on vacation for a week in November, so if we can do something in the next couple of weeks, that will be, that will be good. But why don't you shoot some suggested dates to her, and we'll go from there. Okay?
Okay.
That's number one. Number two, you feel fairly confident you'll have results back in December.
Now I don't, because, you know, that's, that's, I've been doing this a long time, that's how we would schedule it out. We also, you know, we have a standing order with the drillers, sometimes they drops, jobs drop, and we'll, they'll call us and say, hey, we can get you now. We're ready to go as soon as as they are. So, you know, there's an opportunity, maybe we can get done sooner. But things do happen. The drillers could could cancel on us, sometimes that happens because of weather, they'll get backlog and get another job. So all I can do, there's lots of things that could happen both ways. All I can do is tell you, that's sort of what, right now, based on our experience with the labs and drillers, that's the kind of timelines we're looking at.
Okay.
And I wanted to give some idea of when, you know, when I think you're going to have the MPR. You guys really don't care time-wise, when I'm drilling, when I'm sampling and all that, you care about when are we going to have an answer, whether or not we found anything.
So so right now, we'd initially talked about holding November 3rd open for a possible meeting. There's no reason to to do that. Right now, I don't think there's any reason for us to meet on this particular matter on November the 17th. So in a couple of seconds, I'm going to suggest that we continue this matter to December 15th. And obviously, if you don't have the results back, we'll continue it, continue it further. But right now, I would suggest that we'll continue this to December 15th. So far, we have nothing else in for November, but that doesn't mean we won't have anything. Obviously, our schedule was being extended. So as you recall, I think it was at the last meeting or the meeting before that, we had-
A waiver.
We had waived the, the hearing deadline till our January meeting. What I'd like to do is to waive it even further into into February to close the public hearing.
Well, we're good until December 15th, at least.
I'm sorry?
We're good until December 15th.
Well, the next time we'll meet, you know, assuming the results are back and we have a report on this particular matter, will be December 15th. And then what I'd like to do is, because we're going an extra, extra month, is to extend the hearing deadline from our January meeting until our February meeting, which is when, Diana?
It is-
February 16th.
February 16th.
That would require Mike's consent. I can't, we can't do that unilateral, but that would require Mike's consent. But that's what I would be proposing.
Sure.
So, okay. So what I want to do is two things. Number one is to have a motion that would extend the public hearing from, what would have been the date in January, Diana?
January 19th.
From January 19th to February 16, 2023. And again, that's contingent upon the applicant's consent. And I'll draft something, I'll shoot it over to Diana, she can shoot it to you. Dave, could I have a motion in that regard?
So move that we, as you suggested, I didn't write all the dates down.
Second.
Okay. Again, I got to do this by roll call. Dave?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And me, yes. And again, that's contingent on Mike's, Mike's consent. Second thing would be to continue the hearing to December 15, 2022. So in other words, we won't meet at all on this particular matter in November.
I move that we continue this hearing to December 15th.
Second.
Dave?
Aye.
Kim?
Yes.
And me, yes. And Kathy, as I said, that's what I had in my agenda here, so you must have read my computer.
I, I would still like Molly to be there, that's no, I don't want that to get lost, that we have, Bill said we have.
Yeah, your question is, is taken.
Thanks.
Okay, that's it for tonight. Thank you very much.
Cheers.
Don't we have any other business?
Nope.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Have to go by roll call. Dave?
Aye, yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. See you in December.